Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. On behalf of the members of the school board and our superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division, including our newly appointed school board member, Marista Alger. Hello, Marista, how are you doing? Welcome. Ms. Alger was appointed on January 10th to fill the unexpired term of Shelley Simon, who was elected to serve in the General Assembly. She brings a wealth of experience to the school board. She retired from Norfolk Public Schools in July after serving as an elementary school principal for 15 years. She has also served as assistant principal, a specialist, and a teacher. Ms. Alger, welcome to the Newport News School Board, and we look forward to you serving with us. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to the honors are two students from Heinz Middle Schools, Shazier Brown and Alenia Robinson. First, Shazier will come forward and deliver the invocation. He will be followed by Alenia, who will come forward and deliver the pledge. Shazier, please come forward. And before you get started, could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Parker and guests. My name is Shazier Brown. Not your normal child's name, but then again, who likes to be normal? I'm an eighth grader from Heinz Middle School. Our motto is "Heinz is where the heart is." By some, I'm considered a nerd, and I gotta say, us nerds look good. My friends at school sometimes call me a therapist. I guess that's probably why I like helping people so much. But ever since sixth grade, I've worked with robots so much that being an engineer is something I would love to do when I grow older. Now, if you don't mind, I would like to share a little poem with you guys about trusting in oneself. It's called "Believe." Believe in yourself and in your dreams. Though impossible things may seem, someday, somehow, you'll get through to the goal you have in view. Mountains fall and seeds divide before the one who, in his stride, takes a hard road day by day, sweeping obstacles away. Believe in yourself and in your plan. Say not "I can't," but "I can." The prizes of life we fail to win because we doubt the power within.
That was outstanding. So we have a future engineer, I see, with us, huh? Thank you. And next, we will have a miscellaneous. Would you please come up? And before you get started, tell us a little bit about yourself.
No problem. Good evening, school board members, Dr. Parker and guests. My name is Alenia Robinson. I'm a sixth grader at Heinz Middle School, home of the super smart Spartans. I love science and math, which is good because I want to be a health scientist. I hope to find cures for many diseases. During my free time, I love to read, draw, and participate in track and basketball. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may now be seated.
Mr. Shazier and Miss Alenia, let's give them another round of applause. So we have a health science person who's going to cure all the diseases, and then we have an engineer that probably will design the building that she works in. So again, here at Newport News, there are tons of options. Again, well done. And at this time, supporting Shazier and Alenia tonight are their family members and school family. Please stand and be recognized. Again, the board appreciates the encouragement that you have given to these two young individuals, and we thank you for bringing them to tonight's meeting. So again, thank you, job well done. We will move our agenda, I think at this time, we have our board recognitions. And Dr. Parker, would you join me out front?
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Tonight, we're pleased to acknowledge our budget team. Over the past several years, Newport News Public Schools' budget development process has focused on gathering input, identifying funding priorities, and pinpointing ways to reduce spending to ensure the district's financial resiliency. The budget document continues to evolve as well. It is user-friendly and understandable, and it includes more historical and statistical information. The transformation continues to be noteworthy and award-winning. Newport News Public Schools' 2019-2020 Budget has earned the Association of School Business Officials International Meritorious Budget Award for Excellence in Budget Presentation. Joining us this evening to accept this recognition on behalf of the budget team is Senior Budget Analyst Susan Tuto. The 2019-2020 Budget was reviewed by a committee of association members and outside reviewers with experience in public sector budgeting. To earn the meritorious budget award, budget documents have to meet stringent criteria. The budget document has to be clear and understandable. It must include up-to-date budget practices and demonstrate sound fiscal management practices and effective use of educational resources. The review team commented that Newport News' budget represents a professionally-prepared document, which includes a wealth of information in graphic and narrative form, and represents a quality presentation of excellent data useful to the average reader. The district is to be congratulated for their continuous efforts to pursue the meritorious budget award and to continuously improve their budget document. This is the 10th consecutive year that Newport News has earned this prestigious budget award. Joining Ms. Tuto this evening are Budget Director Scarlett Mento and our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Support Services Mary Lou Rosso. Ms. Tuto, please share our congratulations with the entire budget team. Thank you. And you're all welcome to view the budget online. It's quite a thick document. Hint, hint, okay. At this time, we'll take a six-minute break, so that our honorees, we just have one this evening, I think she's staying, may leave if you choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about six minutes. Thank you.
There is only one magical night each year when all 10 magnet programs at Woodside High School bring their talents together for a season of musical splendor. The Center for Arts and Communication hosted their annual Holiday Arts Happening for a winter showcase of combined artistic talents. The festivities started in the cafeteria with a pre-show performance from Woodside's chorus. While their heavenly voices lifted spirits, visual arts students helped guests create their own custom art projects to take home. In the auditorium, the lights dimmed for a series of musical performances by the orchestra, jazz band, guitar orchestra, and piano. Each selection highlighted the combined and individual talents of Woodside's musicians. On stage, dance and theater students offered movement and humor with their unique skills. Communication students produced a holiday music video, while creative writing students brought the written word to life. With over 300 of Woodside's magnet students involved in performances, the creation of visual art displays, and behind-the-scenes technical support, the Holiday Arts Happening was a combined effort of epic proportions. For pre-kindergartners at Marshall Early Learning Center, a world of creative learning revolved around the always delicious Gingerbread Man. Through the new creative curriculum, students are fully engaged in fun activities across content areas that teach meaningful life lessons. The learning experience started with literacy. In each classroom, students read the story about the Gingerbread Man in groups and individually. From here, the students began exploring career opportunities. Cafeteria staff made time to visit classrooms and speak to the students about some of the tools they use to whip up nutritious meals. These learning experiences prepared the students for the big project: teaming up in each classroom to bake their own gingerbread man. Using their reading and listening skills, students worked cooperatively to follow the recipe, mix ingredients, and cut the shapes for the cookies. Cafeteria staff kindly helped each class bake their gingerbread men to perfection, while giving the students a behind-the-scenes tour. Decorating and tasting their creations was the final step in a curriculum full of learning opportunities and tasty discoveries. While Santa was still prepping his sleigh, Books on Bikes Newport News was already gifting books to students at Epps and Greenwood Elementary Schools to help them bundle up with books during winter break. At Greenwood, Books on Bikes passed out free books and bookmarks to every student right before the break started. Students were able to select from a wide range of brand-new books to take home and read while schools were closed. And on the first day of winter break, two teams of bike riding educators and volunteers visited 11 neighborhoods to pass out books and treats to students and families. They were joined by Newport News Fire Department, police officers, sheriff's office, and elected officials, who also handed out hot chocolate, candy canes, holiday bookmarks, handmade blankets, and winter weather accessories. In just a few hours, Books on Bikes handed out 600 books to encourage students to embrace the love of reading during the holidays. Student athletes from Woodside High School are winning on and off the field. Twenty-three high school students representing nine different sports are participating in Athletes in Action, a mentorship program with MacIntosh Elementary. Athletes in Action is organized by Woodside's Assistant Principal, Dr. Diron Ford, and MacIntosh's Principal, Ethel Francis. Twice a month, the student athletes visit MacIntosh to meet with selected elementary students. This gives the elementary students a positive role model to look up to. But the program is also beneficial for the athletes, who learn about the importance of giving back to their community and the power of servant leadership. During their first meeting this school year, students introduced themselves and used a fun activity to get to know each other a little better. The younger students were excited to take their mentors on a tour of their school. Later this year, the roles will switch, with the MacIntosh students visiting Woodside to see what a day in the life of a high school student is really like. Athletes in Action between Woodside and MacIntosh is a winning combination for both schools
Welcome back, and I hope that you enjoyed the school board spotlight. Before we get started with our public comments, I want to go back and regress just a little bit. Our newest school board member, Ms. Marista Alger, her whole family is here. And so, at this time, I would like to have Ms. Alger introduce her family and recognize them, so we can recognize them and do all that good stuff. Welcome.
Yes, thank you so much. I just want to say it's really an honor and a privilege to serve the children here in Newport News, and I am so looking forward to working with everyone here, with my colleagues over here that are sitting next to me, and Dr. Parker, as well as the whole Newport News team. So thank you so much, and I want to thank my family, who have been all my life extremely supportive, and I'm gonna ask them if they could stand up. So I want to recognize them. My son is a teacher at Dozier Middle School, and my husband, we've been together for 32 years, wonderful years. Yeah. And my brother, my mom, stepdad, his wife, I mean, my friends are here, and it's just absolutely a joy to share this moment with them. So thank you so much, and thank you for being here today. Thank you.
Again, welcome, and thank you, the family members, for being here and supporting her, and we really appreciate that. So during our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and also toward the end of the meeting. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns or get back with you at a later time. Please comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin, a green light comes on, a yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light in the beep indicates that your time is up, and at that time, we ask that you would bring your comments to a close. So we do have some cards at this time. Madison Downs, is that correct?
I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to speak today. I'm actually here to be an advocate for many of the concerned citizens in the community regarding the Huntington situation. As you know, from what I've been researching and what I understand, is there was $2.8 million that was allotted that's being held up, I believe, by the mayor's office. My concern is that we haven't moved forward, and we're not sure exactly what's going on with it. My other concern with it is, it seems like if the money's being held up, it seems like a playbook out of the same old gentrification type of a deal. We know that there's gonna be another $30 million coming in, and that's being held up as well. So I'd like to, in some way, be able to work with the board and also other members within Newport News in order to, rather than seeing some situations such as gentrification take place, that we can perhaps work on social-economic empowerment, whereby we're able to empower our citizens as opposed to having our citizens and students being misplaced. Dr. Parker, I'll be reaching out to your office as well as the mayor's office in short order, and see if we can get on each other's schedule and see if we can work some things out. Thank you very much, and look forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you. Ms. Janie Baysmore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mister Chairman, to members of the school board and Mister Superintendent, I'm here, you know why I'm here. I'm here tonight, again, in support of having the Huntington Middle School students continuously assigned to Huntington Middle School. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity. The broader concerns of all humanity here is the students of Huntington Middle School. They have become disenfranchised due to the failures of adults. We must ensure the best for our children. We have failed our children at Huntington, and we have to do something to correct that. Can't turn my page. We had been promised time and time again that the school was going to be rebuilt or renovated, and that we would be kept informed. Unfortunately, when it came down, it was that the school was going to be closed. So, of course, we've been on the battlefield ever since then about Huntington. Huntington must continue as its middle school at an alternative site, and I hope you all will go that way. As the new school board member, Ms. Alger, if I pronounce that correctly, was quoted as saying, "Schools are the hub of a community." We agree. We must do what we can to ensure that there will be students at Huntington come next fall. We cannot stand by idly and let this happen to our community again. Please keep students at Huntington Middle School, because Huntington Middle School shall rise again. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? No?
I think you got some. I don't know, they turned them in.
Did she turn them in? She grabbed them?
Did they turn them in?
Is she... Are you going to plan to speak?
I do.
The cards are on the table.
I put them down at the table.
Oh.
Do you have a picture? Or did you do two?
I did three.
Oh.
Hmm?
We saw her.
Mm-hmm. No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You got it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are you Tamara Wills?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
How are you all?
I wrote you down already.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
I'm the STEAM school board. It's my pleasure to be here. Could all Bridging the Gap members that are in the building please stand up? I just heard a member just make a comment and say, "Hey, we need more parents here." Well, Bridging the Gap is an organization, we're 501(c)(3) nonprofit. My name is Tamara Wills, and I'm the founder of the organization, and we are about meeting our people and our youth where they are. Our organization has been around in the Hampton Roads area since 2012, and we have been serving youth and families in the Hampton Roads area. And our goal is to empower, train, and educate youth in positive ways through interactive leadership and innovation. Our mission is to enhance the lives of children, young adults, families, through the introduction of STEAM, culture, and innovation in entrepreneurship. Bridging the Gap engages our community, youth, and young adults in workforce-related education, training, exposure, and new opportunities. We are in partnership with the iLab. I don't know if everyone knows about the iLab. Bridging the Gap was the initiative in having them put the digital recording studio in that building. If youth can record music, they can eventually learn to build ships. Music schematics matches shipbuilding schematics. And at this time, in that building, you all, you have so many STEM-based things in that building, and it is a great introduction to the youth. So Bridging the Gap Youth Program has started tours, where we do monthly tours, introducing the community to that building. And we are also attempting to pledge in front of the board to go into the schools to introduce some of these creative ideas. We are an organization that believes in meeting our people where they are once again, and the biggest thing is tapping into things that people want to do, and things that will introduce them to these great ideas that STEM is having. I've been a person, you all just now kind of discovering a lot of this, and I'm finding out you have 1.8 million jobs that are not being filled by youth right now. And to us, there has to be a breakdown in the connection of connecting our youth to these great opportunities. So Bridging the Gap has a mission this year of going into the schools and introducing as many people as we can to the innovation lab and all the great ideas that come from STEM and STEAM. All right? Thank you so much, you all. And once again, I do, all the people you see standing up, they're parents, they are people in the community, and our organization is an organization that people want to do the things we're doing. So this is what will make the parents and other people get involved these days, because we are meeting people where they are and doing the things that they like to do. Once you get them in the building, you can introduce them to anything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, I did have your card. Didn't mean for you to go look for another. Okay, now, are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Did I overlook any more cards? Okay. Then we'll move our agenda to our consent... We'll move our agenda to our consent agenda. Item number three, 3.01 minutes from our regular meeting, December 17th, 2019. 3.02 minutes from the school board candidate's forum, December 17th, 2019. 3.03, financial reports, revenue and expense reports, December 2019. Child nutrition reports, December 2019. 3.04, personnel report, and 3.05, the budget transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mister Chairman, I move to adopt the consent agenda items 3.01, 3.02, 3.03, 3.04, and 3.05.
You heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
You heard the motion and the second. Time for the question. Are there being none? Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ealy?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Bass?
Four.
Mrs. Alger?
Four.
Motion carries seven to zero.
And at this time, there were some appointments during the personnel portion of those reports. Dr. Parker, I will turn them over to you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Truly the night of career switchers here, so I'm very happy and pleased to announce three new leaders in our school division who will be joining our schools. I'd like to first introduce Mr. Jason Taylor, and you can stand, please, as I read out your bio. Mr. Taylor is our new Assistant Principal of Operations at Warwick High School. Mr. Taylor is currently serving as a secondary assistant principal at Warwick High School. He began his career as an educator back in 1999 as a band director with Suffolk Public Schools. He then spent almost 10 years in the Navy, go Navy, working as an officer, and this is impressive, as an officer in charge of explosive ordinance and disposal, diving supervisor, and intelligence specialist. He returned to teaching as a band director in Chesapeake Public Schools before joining Newport News Public Schools. Welcome aboard, sir, and what we would like to do is have your family or any friends you have representing you this evening. If you could introduce them, that'd be great. If you could introduce them, that'd be great.
My daughter Morgan. This is my wife Sandy. This is my father Charles and my, my mother Frances. And my other family is...
All right, all right. Well, thank you. We're looking for great things and we're, and looking forward to your leadership, so welcome aboard, sir. Appreciate you. Uh, joining us also this evening is, um, Ms. Melissa Rhodes, uh, a new Secondary Assistant Principal at Warwick High School. Obviously, we had to find a replacement for, uh, for Jason. And, uh, Ms. Rhodes is currently an Assistant Principal in Canton City Public Schools. Uh, prior to her relocation, uh, to Ohio, Ms. Rhodes was a teacher and lead teacher for 15 years in Newport News Public Schools at Demby High and Heritage High School. So, that kills the myth that our folks don't come back. They come, they eventually come back. Uh, we welcome you back to Newport News. And who's with you this evening? Would you, would you, you're welcome to introduce your family or friends.
I have my husband Daryl, who's also a former, uh, teacher in Newport News. He and I were both first. I have my daughter Naomi, Zara, and my son Marcus, and I'm very excited to be back in Huntington Middle School. With my new family back here.
All right. Great evening for Warwick High School and, uh, we welcome aboard. We look forward to your leadership as well. And the final appointment this evening is, uh, I'd like to introduce Ms., uh, Ms., Mrs. Dan- Danisha Baysmore, a new Secondary Assistant Principal at Crenington Middle School. Uh, she is currently, uh, serving as a Dean of Students in Norfolk Public Schools. And Ms. Baysmore has been an educator for almost 12 years. She has also served as an Instructional Technology Resources Specialist in Norfolk, in Norfolk Public Schools and as a teacher in Abu Dhabi United Arab Immigrants. Uh, Suffolk Public, she's also served in Suffolk Public Schools and Norfolk Public Schools as a teacher. Uh, she brings eight years of experience in the Army, uh, before beginning her, her teaching career. So, thank you this evening for joining us. If you'd like to introduce, uh, family or friends who are joining you this evening? Awesome, awesome. Well, welcome to the Newport News family. And we're looking for great things from your, and your, from your leadership as well. Thank, welcome aboard. And that concludes the appointments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Parker. Again, let's give those, uh, again, welcome aboard and let's give them another round of applause. Yeah, she might find a relative.
The question, uh, here is, uh, is Ms. Baysmore, Ms. Baysmore, are they related?
Right. Okay, uh, we are going to move to action items. Uh, so first action item, item number 4.01, our new and revised policies. Uh, that was part of our presentation last board meeting. Uh, is there a motion, uh, for the approval of those new revised policies?
I make a motion to approve and adopt the new revised policies in 4.01.
You heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You heard the motion and the second. A time for the question.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one question just in regards to the concussion management policy. Uh, it talks about biannally updating the procedures for concussion management. Uh, and the question is, what was the rationale behind biannally as opposed to annually or every four years or any other frequency?
Ms. Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a state requirement and I, I don't know the reason for that, for the update to biannual, but to have the requirement that we didn't have before is one of the reasons they want to make sure that we are revising the review of the policies and keeping them current. But it was a state requirement.
Any other questions for the policies? There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Bass?
Four.
Mrs. Alger?
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, and we'll move to the next item, item number 4.02, Huntington Middle School Academic Plan for Physical Year 2020 to 2021. And, uh, we'll, we will have, um, Mr. Dr. Parker. Turn it over to him first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm going to reiterate the, uh, recommendation of administration, uh, at the last, uh, board meeting regarding the, uh, Huntington Middle School Academic Plan. Um, the school board has been examining options for an academic plan for students who would have attended Huntington Middle School had it, uh, not been closed. Um, as you recall, in 2018, uh, which would, uh, the Huntington was closed, which would assign, and students were assigned to Heinz Middle School and Crenington Middle School with community input. Um, students in the seventh and eighth grade remained at Heritage High School, where they would remain together until they graduate, um, transition to high school. We're now transitioning, we're in year two of that transition, uh, academic plan and we're moving into year three where we have to, uh, where we want, where the plan would call for, uh, rising sixth grade students to transition to Crenington, uh, Middle School and Heinz Middle School. And this plan would remain in place until Huntington High School is built. The two, uh, options that were presented to the board would require, uh, a rezoning plan, which is why we needed the board to take action, Mr. Chairman, if there was a, um, a decision made to move away from the current academic plan. Uh, the board studied those two, uh, alternatives to the current plan. The first uses, uh, Heritage High School as an assignment option until a new Huntington Middle School is constructed. Um, the second assigns Huntington Middle School students to, rising Huntington, Huntington Middle School students to Newsome Park and makes adjustments to Newsome Park in order to implement an assignment plan. This plan could also serve as, um, as an interim step until a new Huntington Middle School is constructed. Now, all options were looked at, were presented to the board, um, including the existing plan. And we also met, had a public, uh, hearing on that, uh, earlier this month regarding the, uh, options that were available to hear, to gather community input. As we have already informed the board, um, based on, uh, recent input and our, our review, the administration's review of all three plans, uh, we solely consider this an academic plan and that's, that's the, um, the primary basis for our recommendation. We have to decide the important process of what a sixth grader will experience next year in terms of their academic, uh, experience, uh, um, next year. Um, this is not an indictment on any plans to build or the project of a Huntington Middle School. We still feel fully committed to the design and build of a Huntington Middle School. However, we were tasked by this board to solely look at the academic plan and what would be the most feasible plan for sixth grade students. As I look tonight at Shazir and Elena, two sixth grade stu-, uh, eighth grader and a sixth grader at Heinz Middle School, I'm reminded of the importance of academics, of leadership programs, of youth development opportunities, of having a well-rounded, uh, access to, uh, electives and fine arts and other areas, foreign language and higher academics, of taking high school level courses and having the opportunity to take high school level courses while you're in middle school to get an early jump on college. A student cannot repeat a sixth grade year. They're, they're only going to have one. And sixth grade is a year where a student is transitioning from elementary and needs to have a firm footing on their middle school experience in order to become the students that we saw tonight, uh, presenting the pledge and also speaking before this board. It is with that in mind that the administration's recommendation is to continue with the current option, solely as an academic option until a Huntington Middle School is built. The administration feels that this is the, uh, most solid academic plan for students that allows us, the only option that allows for a full selection of academic courses and electives and, um, options such as, um, extracurricular options as well. The other two options, we have to start on a limited basis for those students with lim-, which limits the, um, options for their sixth grade experience. So, Mr. Chairman, the recommendation of the administration is to continue with the current academic plan until a Huntington Middle School is built.
Uh, board, y'all have heard the recommendation coming from the superintendent and that recommendation was to, uh, keep the kids, uh, the students where they are and, uh, continuing to a new Huntington School is built.
Excuse me?
Have a motion?
What you mean, keep them where they are?
Um, the plan, the, the plan is to have the kids, the students attend either Heinz Middle School or Crenington Middle School.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, yes. Well, there's, there's, well, first, there's a motion on the floor, the recommendation from the superintendent, but you can make a motion because no one's made a motion yet. So, but the recommendation on the floor right now is to, recommendation by the superintendent is to continue with the kids, our students, attending Heinz and Crenington Middle School.
It was a recommendation, but not a motion.
Not a motion, recommendation.
Recommendation, not a motion.
Right, it's a recommendation.
She has the, the motion.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the rising sixth graders zoned for Huntington Middle School attend Heritage High School as sev- sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and that Huntington Middle School students continue attending Huntington at Heritage High School until Huntington Middle School is rebuilt.
I second that motion.
You heard the first, you heard the motion, and you heard the second. The time for the question.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, before we vote, I thought I would just explain my, my vote and as well my reasons for, for seconding it. So, I've, um, certainly agonized over this quite a bit, uh, in, in terms of, we are, we are looking at the best of three bad options, uh, but we are, we are where we are where the facility itself has been closed. We're waiting a new replacement facility to be built. Uh, and in the interim, what is in the best interest of all the kids, uh, for, um, while we're wait, replacement facility? What we have to, what I've had to weigh personally is, on the one hand, uh, there is a concern, um, if the students are at Heritage or at Newsome Park, uh, have a limited curriculum and/or a limited, um, extracurricular activities program for the students. Uh, but, uh, also as well, uh, I'm balancing that out with, there is a concern about, uh, the length of time that students have to ride the bus and the proximity of the school to their homes and the likelihood that a student will participate in extracurricular activities and will, uh, be able to avail themselves of all the, uh, electives if they are spending a lot more, a lot more time, uh, away or way or out of school. And so, I'm, I'm weighing that in terms of, uh, proximity. Uh, the other, uh, consideration for me was, uh, in the long run, allowing the facility to be, uh, remain closed, uh, when it finally comes around to the, the council, uh, providing some funding. Uh, I'm concerned in the worst-case scenario that the council could say, "Well, you've been operating without a Huntington Middle School for three years, four years, or however long it takes them to come around to providing funding. We're still waiting on, we haven't even gotten the money that was, was voted for, uh, for it." That they will say, "Well, you've been operating without it, so just keep on doing that." And I know that what has been presented on the other side is that, "Well, if you allow, uh, students to be, um, at Heritage High School where there is, there's going to be learning cottages, uh, and it's not going to be an optimal, uh, situation, still a, um, a suboptimal Huntington, I think, is still better for the kids than a, um, a no, a no Huntington at all." Uh, meaning that Huntington would still be, uh, first and foremost in terms of trying to get that school replaced and built. Uh, and, and as we've listened to parents, um, come and talk to us and, and I will say that I was somewhat disappointed we didn't have more parents come to, uh, the public forum. I want to emphasize the parents, at any time that the school board, um, goes through the effort to make a motion to have a listening session in your area, we are spending money, we're spending your tax dollars to go down to Marshall Early Learning Center and house the forum. So, really, you, you need to come because it is an effort to hear from you. But I, 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 I mean, reflecting on it, I reflect on the skepticism potentially that, uh, parents are saying, "Well, you've already have your mind made up." And I want you to know that my mind was not already made up and I did listen to the, the few parents who did come and the families who did speak and their, uh, voice was for a Huntington at Heritage High School. And so, for all of those reasons, uh, I am in support of a Huntington at Heritage High School.
Um, any other questions?
Yes. I guess I didn't really agonize about it, but over the last couple of days and especially the last couple of hours, uh, it is, is apparent to me, and I've, I've said this numerous of times, that if we don't have a plan, then someone else will have a plan for us. And it is, it, based on my experience, I do not believe that, um, that we will get a middle school built in a timely manner. I also believe that, after talking to a couple of parents today, that I, uh, physically contacted because I wanted to hear from individuals that, uh, those fifth graders now would be affected by. And I asked them point blank, "Where do you want your child to go to school at?" And five out of five told me I want them to stay at or go to, uh, Heritage High School. I also posed the problem, I mean, posed the question that I think I've heard the many times, me and you, Mr. Chairman, has talked about this, uh, the, the cross-pollination of young kids in high school, kids and things of this nature. And, uh, and one parent said, "Well, you know, when I was a kid, I didn't have to, if I was going to do anything like that, I didn't have to do it at school. I could do it on my way home or whatever the case may be." So, which is actually true. I think we have a trusted leadership that's there at the school. I think we have great leadership at Heritage High School. And the flip side of that, I do not, didn't want the board to be the reason or the excuse, uh, that the city has not held up that end of the bargain. I also hear parents say they would rather have their kids closer to them and not take that bus ride up to, uh, Crenington or the, or the other school. Also, I hear parents say that, uh, the other school is bursting at the seams or, or they've heard issues and things of this nature. Uh, I talked to Dr. Bass, I talked to, uh, my other esteemed colleagues from the South, John, uh, because I knew their input would weigh heavily on what I had to decide on. And I also told them that I want to talk to parents even though most of them didn't participate the way they should have. I have to trust Dr. Bass and trust John that parents may not contact Marvin Harris in the North District. They probably talking to their representatives. So, I had to weigh, uh, not just what they had to say, but also I went out and found, you know, the information for myself. So, you know, it is apparent to me, uh, not just the physicality, the safety part of it, but also we as a board, if we do not make a decision, then I believe there would be no Huntington. So, you know, I stand in, in support of, of, uh, those fifth graders moving to, uh, Huntington High School.
Any other questions?
I have a comment.
Uh, Mr. Ely and then Dr. Bass.
I would like to thank the, you, Dr. Parker and administrative team for the presentation that y'all put together for which I thought was best for the kids. But when I first came on the school board four years ago, they had a joint meeting, city council and school board at Down the Gross Cultural Center. They were still talking about the same problem that they're talking about now when I wasn't even on the school board. Here we go fast forward, four years later. If we move these kids out of the school and put them to Crenning and Heinz, I do not have faith in this city that they will provide us with another middle school. They haven't even gave us the money, the $2 million that's been allocated. It's simple. They don't care. And I'm not one of the school board members, you can't just tell me anything. I visit, I'm at Crenning, Heinz, Heritage, Huntington, I want to know what's going on. When I go to those schools, Crenning for instance, and have a teacher crying saying it's just too much, she don't have the support, I knew at that point we could not take any more kids at that school. They don't have the support that they need now. And then when you on this board, we're elected, it's not about what John want. It's about what the people in the community are telling us. They elected us to be on this board. So, when I'm out talking to parents, I'm out talking to citizens, I'm out talking to kids, this is, we had several community meetings, I haven't had one ki- kid, a parent say, "I want to go to Heinz or Crenning." I didn't hear them say that. You had the young lady come up, when we did the Oprah Forum in Newsa Park and said how it's great for, um, great partnerships, had another young girl come up and say how the kids at Heritage mentor the, the younger kids. So, I just have to go by what the community is telling me, which elected us. I have to go by what I see and I have to go by what's best, the well-being, not just for kids, for teachers as well. I feel teachers saying, the, the job is already hard enough. It's a job I couldn't do. And to see teachers say, "Mr. Ely, is there something you can do? Please help us." I have to, you know, go make the best decision. And we have two very talented principals at Heritage and at Huntington. And I know they tasked with a lot. It's a huge responsibility for them. But I know those two young ladies can make it happen. If anybody can make it happen, I believe they can make it happen, they will make it happen. And most of all, they love those children. Those children, and it's a great partnership they have. Those children, and it's a great partnership they have. They work very well together, the kids interact very well together, and I know with the team that we have here, we can make that experience for children very great. Thank you.
Dr. Best?
Okay, I have some comments as well. Well, I, I too have pondered, I have prayed, I have lost sleep, my blood pressure has been up as a result of thinking about the dilemma that we are in, facing the students that are assigned to Huntington. There has been some concern about the number of parents that came out to express concerns, to express their opinions regarding where the children should go, and I've been given comments or told things such as, "Well, they didn't come out, so they must don't care," or, "They didn't come out, so we don't know if that's really what they want, you know, to happen." But I'm here to say, as a representative that lives in the southeast community, I see and I talk to these people literally everywhere that I go, so I hear it, I hear the comments. And many of these people, they, they feel like the way that Huntington was closed, there was not any input, there was not any meeting, there was anything like that, anything like that when it was closed. After it was closed, there was a meeting with the parents to tell them where your students would go, but before, there was not, so there is a lack of trust. So I have listened to when people approached me, and just like my colleague, Mr. Harris, I have also solicited some opinions, or, "Tell me, what do, what do you think about this, well, why do you think about this?" And I have also looked at what people are seeing on social media. I don't take social media as, as the, the end-all and the be-all, but I want to look at it, and I want to feel the pulse of what people are saying regarding this issue. This is one of the things that was said on social media, and I quote, "Those poor babies are being shuffled in the wind, and nobody wants to tell the truth." And in the end, I find it mostly amusing, because trust the board, in coordination with the city, has already made a decision. And I was really kind of offended by this, because I'm like, "We, we haven't made a decision." But what I want you all to understand is, the community, that's the way that they feel, and their perception is their reality. And so when we question sometimes, "Why don't people come out?", sometimes we have to look at ourselves. So I am trying to be a board member that listens and that shares with my fellow colleagues what the people in my community are saying. If this is what the people are saying to me, and whether one or 31 come to a meeting, then that's what I'm going to share with the board, I'm just not going to base it on numbers, I'm going to share what has been, I'm not going to base it on numbers that shows up, show up at a meeting, but I'm going to base it on what was shared with me. And as I just continued to ponder this, I almost wanted someone, I'm like, "Can somebody share a nugget with me?", because there may be something I have not heard, I have not considered, because I don't think that I know everything, and I, I certainly don't think I know everything and everyone in the southeast community, but I, I almost wanted someone to tell me something that I had not considered, and as of this point, it has not been said yet. But the parent trust is clearly, is clearly not there.
Anyone else?
I would like to, to say I have too, lost sleep, I've had frustrations over this entire debacle we're in. It should not have happened the way that it did, Dr. Best, I agree 100%. And then the challenge ends up being, what do you do when a mistake has been made? Do you continue in that same vein? So I too did some asking around, because I wanted to hear from the constituents and the players who I thought would give a perspective that I don't know that we have. And the, the constituents I spoke to were high school students, and we, I was actually said, I can't, said to, "I can't believe you guys would even consider putting 11-year-olds with 18-year-olds." And that came from high school students. That surprised me that it was the first thing that came out of their mouth. The comment was also that it's hard enough for a ninth grader to be going to high school in this day and age. My challenge really is about opportunity. We have denied these students the opportunity in their community. My concern is that if we continue to deny the opportunity, where will they land? Academics is important, it is part, should be part of your community, but if we have to provide it someplace else, then I believe that we should provide that for our students. So my vote tonight is going to be to keep them at Hines and at Crenston.
Anyone else?
As a new board member, I've been listening, and, and part of me, based on my experience with, in particular, I'm thinking fifth graders, and thinking how much fear they have going to middle school. And I'm think, I'm wondering, in terms of questions that I have, what would a sixth grader want as far as going to a high school? Is that something that they themselves would be okay with? And, you know, we talk about empowering people, and we have to empower our children as well. And so, that's something that I have questions about and concerns about in terms of having, you know, sixth through 12th. So I don't know the answer, but I, I do have questions, and that's, I'm going to leave it at that.
Anyone else?
I wanted to say that, in the sixth grade, I wasn't really involved as much. I was kind of quiet and shy in the back of the classroom, but once I got to high school, and I hung around on my peers that were, you know, older than me, and when I was in the ninth grade, and I was hanging out with 12th graders, they were able to kind of be a mentor towards me. And even now, I'm still talking to this guy that, that goes to Morehouse, and he's telling me about all the cool things that are in Morehouse, and it's kind of influencing, influencing me to go there and to be extravagant. So the opportunities that middle schoolers have, I believe that will be enhanced once they are kind of intertwined with high school students, because not only do you have a mentor, but you also have opportunities that you would not even be able to have in middle school. Because in high school, I was able to be amongst peers that were striving for excellence, and in middle school, I had that same, had that same atmosphere, but it was slightly less. I believe that in high school, you are able to have so many more opportunities than you would ever have in middle school. You're able to have community out, um, community leaders come to your high school and tell you what's happening, and you're being involved in what's happening in the community. I don't believe that would ever happen in middle school unless you were super involved in your community, which I clearly was not. So I believe that by, these students being able to go to high school is actually an opportunity, rather than hindering their abilities to be extravagant or even excel in their classrooms.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say one last thing. In making this decision, though, I, it's still not the best idea for kids. I want to, I want to be clear with that. I do not think it's okay to have sixth graders with high school students, but in the situation that we are in right now, it is the best decision. I just want to make, case city watching us, we need our Huntington Middle School. We just have to make this decision, because y'all won't give us the money for our middle school, it's simple. But it's not the best decision for kids. Our kids need their own middle school, which they can thrive in, that they can call their own, and be great. This is, it's sad that we even having this conversation, four years down the road, when I was just sitting in the audience, saying, "I want to run for school board." So to still have this conversation, it's not very much, and the money been appropriated, Dr. Parker, have they gave you the money yet? Still don't have the money. So for me, for us to have, for, for me to move on, we definitely need a middle school, I just felt like this is the best decision for what we in now. I don't want to make them think like, this is a great permanent decision, no, I don't think that, this is just what's best, what we, with the cards we deal now. I just want to make that clear.
And for those of you that may not know, there is a sixth through 12th grade school that's Achievable Dream Middle High School, and they seem to make it work, and many private schools also make it work, and, and as John has talked about, the two leaders at that school, there are two dynamic leaders, it's not the best situation, but if it can be done, it can be done with those two ladies, and, and the plan is not for them to be sitting next door, I mean, to be sitting in class in seats next to each other and things like that. They will work as they have done for the past two years with the sixth grader, sixth and, with the seventh and eighth graders, and then this past year with the eighth graders as well, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make one last, quick one, no, I know I already talked for a while. So, my, my last quick point is just the, the last thing I did mention earlier was an equity argument, in, in terms of the kids that live down there, I believe they have a right to a school. We've identified, we've done analysis, which determines that there are roughly 600 to 900 families in the area, and there was a need for a school, so we already did an assessment study two years ago, that said there is a need for a school there, and so there's that need, I believe precipitates them having a right to it. And then the last thing I'll add on to that is, that in terms of that community versus my own, so my own kids are zoned for, for Dozier, if they didn't like Dozier for one, any, whatever reason, they could apply to Booker T., or they could apply to Achievable Dream. The kids down, down here, if they don't want to go to their neighborhood school, oh, that's right, they don't have one, and then they got to get into Booker T. or Achievable Dream, or they, there's no middle school for them, so, or they got to go to school, you know, way out of their, way out of their zone, you know, way across town. So, in terms of an equity argument and fairness, the kids down there, they, they deserve, they have a right to a school in their neighborhood, like everybody else in the city has that. And so that's the other reason why I'm, I feel passionate about this.
All right, well, I'm going to, I'm going to close it out. I typically don't say anything, but I will this time. And I, I tell you, I'm going to vote against it, because we pay folk, we have intelligent individuals that we hire. I'm not an educator, but I must listen to recommendations that come from them. We must, I live with an educator, an elementary school counselor, who's been an elementary school counselor for 30-something years. And yes, I did go to, I went to elementary school up to sixth grade, and I was good. And I, and two weeks ago, when you asked me where I thought that the kids should go, and I thought they should go to Newsome Park, of all, of any place, because there are, many of us did go to elementary school from K to six. I went there, then I went to junior high school, I never went to intermediate school, I never went to a middle school, but there are many K-six schools. But I have two daughters who graduated from this school system. I would have a fit to have my 11th-year-old daughters to be with 18-year-old men, young men, and I don't care how many security we get, then we'll turn that school into a prison by having so much security. And today, we have cell phones and alike. We must listen to our students, they're bright. So the first year, we had 160 kids that we sent to Crenston and Hines, and this second year, we've had another 160. There are 300 and roughly 20 kids that I haven't heard from one, not, not heard from one, haven't heard from a parent. I represent the whole entire city, I'm on multiple boards in the city. With there, my daughters went to Gilder sleeve, right behind us, it's four miles from our house, four. The kids who live in Kim Creek, they are, most of them are directed to Hines, it's about eight miles away, it's on the other side of 64. Most of the middle schools in our city are not in neighborhoods. There are really three middle schools that are really in the South District. There's Crenston, there's Booker T., and there's an Achievable Dream. There are three schools, middle schools, in the South District. Even three miles from 16th Street, there's probably not three miles from 16th Street to Crenston. Most of, most of the neighborhoods in the South District have sidewalks. Not only that, they have public transportation, it may get there, they may get to school late, but they can get there. My daughters couldn't, that my daughters had to walk about two and a half miles just to get to Warwick Boulevard, and not just my daughters, most of the folks who live in Newport News, because of the way that the city is built. So I will have to strongly disagree that because, for one reason, if we put sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in that school, and we maintain them there, who knows who's going to be on the city council? Basically, what you end up with, four middle schools in the South District. So I don't ever want, people tell me that there's no schools in the South District. There are, there are. We must, this board, we must, we must also empower those, those people that are expert. We have yet to hear from the students, even that student who came and says she felt, she said she felt uncomfortable, guess what? So did I, when I went to, went to junior high school. So did I when I moved from Philadelphia down to go to Hampton Institute. So did my daughters, when they transferred from private school over to the middle school. They've never, they went to, they went to a school with predominantly white. They came into Gilder sleeve, something they had never dealt with before. Were they were nervous, yes. But we're giving kids that are already challenged, or could be challenged, we, this is, this is a school system of opportunities, and what we've just done, we hamper their opportunities. My last thought, just hypothetical, I have, I have twins, they're, I'm a single family, a single father in the South District, who are in fifth grade. When I, I had to work two jobs, I came home and saw my daughter hanging out with some girls, young ladies her age, or a little bit older, that I know, that older sisters got babies, what have you. I see my son, who's a good athlete, but I can't afford to take him there, but I also come home and see him on the corner with some guys that I believe that's part of that gang. Now, I'm sending them downtown, where they could be at schools, like the two folks we saw today, the young folks, and they'll have that opportunity to play sports, they'll have that opportunity to take Spanish, or take art. I think we do a disjustice, I think our kids are smarter, they can handle that, because if they didn't, I believe the kids would be on social media. That's who run social media, not the parents. The kids, what got on social media says, "I cannot stand coming here to Crenston or Hines." There's going to be a school built there, but let me tell you, if we make the wrong move and build the school ourselves, and put it, put a Hines, and put a school there by themselves, guess what, you never know who's on the city council. Two years from now, they just, guess what, you've survived for three years, you've got three, four high school, middle schools here, we don't need to build a Huntington. I think we're doing just the opposite. That school was closed for a reason, it was not a place for learning. What's best for kids? I know people had meetings there in the evening and things, guess what, you went to a lot of folks' house in the daytime, or in the early afternoon, but if you cut the lights off, and came back and turned the lights back on, there was insects and roaches all over the place. So the school was closed, I'm, I was on the board, the school was closed for the, the right reason, because it was not a place of learning, not a good environment for learning. I wouldn't have put, and the thing I always say, what I have put my daughters there, and the answer was, no. No. There's no. You have to believe, if you don't believe the city's going to build a, a, a new school board, I mean, new school, then someone needs to run for the city council and get new city council members. We, we can't ride this on the back of kids, that we're making decisions for them, and then some folks are really looking for it to run track, like my daughter did when she was in sixth grade, she ran track, and she became a state champion. But if she loses that opportunity in the sixth grade... She ran track, and she became a state champion. But if she loses that opportunity in the sixth grade, I mean, you missed one whole year. Like you said again, there's no repeats. There's no repeats. But I know it's a tough decision. It is a tough decision. I do believe, and I do believe there's going to be a Huntington Middle School built. I know we all have our own issues. I know we have our own thoughts. I think we all have said our own piece tonight. So if there being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call the robe. Excuse me, could you remove him from, from, from the?
When I leave, I just, you ought to be ashamed of yourself for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Against.
Ms. Doc, I'm sorry. Mrs. Searls Law?
Against.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mrs. Alger?
Against.
Motion carries for three.
Okay, let's continue our agenda. We had item number five, Reports and Information, 5.01. We have the Bloom and Rise updates.
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair, Mrs. Searls Law, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. I'm here tonight, joined by Dr. Diron Ford, to brief you on some very exciting work that's taking place across the division to empower our students. As you know, for years Newport News, Public Schools has been a leader in student involvement, making it possible for students to participate in hundreds of clubs, sports, and activities. As we advance along the youth development continuum, we look for more and more diverse ways to equip our students to be college, career, and citizen ready, and ways to empower their voice and contribution. We are very fortunate that our school division is committed to positive youth development programming that promotes positive experiences, relationships, and environments for all of our students. Both initiatives which we will discuss tonight are designed to build essential skills and traits like positive self-identity and empathy, to empower students to lead, serve, and contribute, and that make it possible for them to create healthy relationships and bonding with nurturing adults. I've had an opportunity previously to introduce you to the Bloom Middle School Girls Empowerment Program. Tonight, I will provide an update on all things Bloom, followed by Dr. Ford, who will introduce you to the Rise Male Empowerment Network, our newest division-wide effort to promote the success of our male students. In February 2018, we sponsored the first-ever Division-Wide Student Conference for 200 Middle School Girls at Christopher Newport University. And at the end of the conference, in addition to very positive feedback, many of the students asked the same question, what's next? And can we do this again? So by April of that year, we successfully launched Bloom Clubs in several of our middle schools. The mission of Bloom is to empower every girl to see herself as having the ability to change the world. Not someday, but right now in the present. So for the past two years, Bloom has sponsored extraordinary experiences for more than 300 girls in all NNPS middle schools. The program is curriculum-based and led by NNPS school-based staff, high school, college, and community empowerment coaches, also known as our yellow shirts. Bloom members are encouraged to continually ask themselves what they value and believe. They begin every empowerment session and every activity by enthusiastically reciting the Bloom Creed. We encourage the girls to live the creed by internally, internalizing it and using it every single day as a way not only to self-assess, but also to hold each other accountable. We remind them that every time they open their mouths, they could potentially change the world. The tagline for Bloom Always Becoming is the last line of the creed, which reminds them that we are all a work in progress, encouraging them to take risks and to welcome mistakes, which are expected when your goal is to change the world. And just to show you what they are capable of, I'd like to share a special compilation video created by Lyric Slaughter, who is a Warwick High School junior. Pretty awesome, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I just kind of spoke out into the atmosphere that I needed a video that showed what we believed in, but also what we did. And I think she did an amazing job. So thank you very much, Lyric. One of the most impactful features of Bloom are the extraordinary experiences. These opportunities are not only designed to reinforce the Bloom curriculum, but also to expose, expose program participants to culture, to connect them to strong female role models, and to show them the power of serving others. Excitement for the third annual Bloom Conference, More Than a Princess, which will be held in March, is already growing. I'll share details about the conference later in the presentation. In our schools, Bloom Club members, which number almost 300 now, participate in empowerment sessions, in empowerment workshops which focus on important topics like positive self-identity, how to differentiate between healthy, unhealthy, and toxic relationships, and how to create a vision for your life. 140 members have had the privilege of being the very special guests for two STEM days sponsored by the Huntington Ingalls Women in Shipbuilding Enterprise, or WISE, program, each followed by visits to several elementary schools, where the Bloom members themselves led their own service projects for their younger peers. A highlight for some of the girls last year was also traveling to London, Paris, and Barcelona during spring break of 2019. Some will have an opportunity to travel this summer to Rome, Florence, Barcelona, and Madrid in late June of this year. Their international experience did not end there. The students also launched their own service project, Bloom for Wasina, which I will also share more about later in the presentation. Our hope is that all of these experiences combine to give the girls a future orientation and help them to develop a determination to do what is necessary to secure a positive future for themselves. So, I got ahead of myself, but there is a movement referred to as Bloom Nation. It includes students, parents, teachers, college students, and community partners, including several female leaders in business, government, and even some familiar faces from our own school division. We are sincerely grateful for their support, which powers this initiative. And they don't know why I asked them here, but I asked some of the members of Bloom Nation to come today. They came to support me, but I wanted to publicly, I'm going to ask them to stand, some of our empowerment coaches. I want to thank them for all that they do. And thank you so much. Kyler, keep standing. Kyler is a Woodside student who has been, was a Bloom member and is now a Bloom coach at Woodside. So I'll talk about the high school program in just a minute. So this is what we're doing. Thank you, Kyler. For example, oh, for example, the picture on the bottom is of our high school and college students who continually come out to lead event programming. Many who are away at college stay connected all year with conference planning and volunteer over their breaks. The poster on the right includes pictures of amazing female leaders who participated in our second annual Wonder Woman Power Hour during the Bloom Summer Leadership Institute. These women engaged the girls in an open conversation about whatever the girls wanted to discuss, followed by a networking lunch, which gave the girls an opportunity to practice their communication skills. The last module in the Bloom curriculum is the World Changer Project. Last year, the girls raised nearly $3,000 for the Bloom for Wasina Project. The Women and Children's Empowerment Network in Africa empowers girls through education in Uganda. The relationship between Bloom and Wasina has yielded life-changing results. With the money raised by Bloom, over 800 girls were able to buy hygiene projects, hygiene products, excuse me. It was so incredible to see their gratitude displayed by the Bloom sign they planted in Ugandan soil. In addition, we were able to donate laptops refurbished by Heritage High School students and provided through the Virginia Star Program. Just a few weeks before that, the girls in Uganda had to crowd around a single computer just for a chance to connect with Bloom members in two of our middle schools via a Zoom broadcast. Our donation, our donation, the Bloom donation, has so inspired the folks in Wasina that they've decided to launch a proposal to build their own Girl Tech Lab. It'll be the first of its kind in Uganda. Another example of the project is that when Bloom for Wasina was mentioned on a radio talk show in Uganda, a local university invited the girls in Wasina to attend the Girls Empowerment Camp in Kampala, the Ugandan capital. What an awesome example to our students of just how one pebble can make several ripples. So what does the future hold for Bloom members? This was the question our concerned eighth graders asked as they pondered transitioning to high school. Is this it? What's next after Bloom? Understanding that high school girls have very different needs than middle school girls, we launched the Flourish Program to empower our high school champions. The Flourish tagline, as you can see here, is lead fearlessly, live authentically. Flourish currently has nearly 150 members at Heritage, Warwick, and Woodside High Schools. This year, we also did a soft launch of an elementary program, Blossom, at an Achievable Dream, Newsome Park, and Carver, with Macintosh and Yates on deck. Finally, I would like to invite you to the Third Annual Bloom More Than a Princess Empowerment Conference on Friday, March 20th, and Saturday, March 21st, at Woodside High School from 8:30 to 3:30 PM. Several of you attended last year and witnessed the high-energy exuberance and excitement of the Girl Power Rally, which included amazing student performances, the musical stylings of DJ Cupcake, our 14-year-old DJ, and recognition of seven girls residing in Hampton Roads between the ages of six and 21, who are already changing the world with the More Than a Princess World Changer Award. We are looking forward to the addition of Flourish and Blossom to this year's rally. On day two, there will be more than 20 empowerment workshop sessions for both students and parents, a panel discussion, the annual lit lunch, and a resource fair to connect families with local service providers. Registration for the conference will begin in late February. We are currently seeking sponsorships, resource vendor fairs, resource fair vendors, and proposals for prospective presenters. If you are interested in learning more about the student empowerment, this particular student empowerment initiative, please contact me at the information provided above. We would also like to encourage you to consider becoming an official sponsor of the Bloom Conference. These endeavors require a considerable amount of resources, and they cannot be accomplished without the help of those who invest in our important work. Thank you. That is the end of my report for Bloom. Dr. Ford will come up in just a minute, but I'd like to take a minute to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Comment.
John?
I just want to say thank you for the amazing program you put on every year. I had the chance to visit it last year at the Hampton Roads Convention Center, just to see the excitement of all the girls and youth. And it was amazing, from dancing to singing to everything. It was just very powerful. And it's something good, and it's something maybe we can submit when we go to the national conference. I don't know how we can do that, but submit this program there, the Bloom and the Rise. Because just to see, even with the Rise, when I attended last year at Heritage, just to see all the men from the community and the kids feel empowered by this whole thing. I would love to see other school divisions across United States adopt this program. So thanks again for all you're doing, and it's amazing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Best?
Comment as well. Thank you for your presentation. I'm a Bloom fan, supporter, lover.
Bloom Nation, you're a part, sorry.
But I had the opportunity to come to the conference and the day at the apprentice school. So I just observed them, the girls, but to see them just take the leadership roles, the confidence, how they articulate, it was just, you could see the fruits of your labor just overwhelmingly. So I would like to commend you on a, on a great job and keep up the good work. And, and all your helpers and all of your supporters.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Well, I, I love Bloom. I carry my notebook, and people ask me what it's about, and I get to, you know, shout the praises. But the thing that is really exciting to me is to see the girls who are in Bloom, in the district, doing other things as well. They are really outgoing. They have a sense of empowerment that you don't necessarily see from the other girls. And what was really cute, here recently, I was at a school, and I said, wow, you're just such a leader. You're outgoing. She says, of course, I'm in Bloom. And so it's when you hear it from the kids' mouths that it's working. So I wanted you to, you know, know that tidbit and let us know all the events we want to come.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Mr. Brown?
I was just going to say that I was really excited to see the leveraging of our Virginia Star Program and seeing the young ladies put together computers and give them away. So that is demonstrating, that's a concrete outcome from Bloom. So I'm just very, you know, that's very encouraging to see concrete outcomes like that, that they're involved in Bloom. They can say, I was involved with refurbishing computers and giving them away. And when people ask, how was your leadership demonstrated? So I think, could please continue to do demonstrated type of project-based programs with the, with the kids, because that's, that's really critically important, and as well encouraging young girls, of course, as we know, to get more involved in STEM and consider that as a career. So you're getting involved in a STEM project at a time when they're considering maybe not pursuing STEM. Because we know that in high school years is kind of when we start to lose, you lose young ladies. So this is, this is really very encouraging and very, very powerful. And I'll echo the comments of, it's great, people would say, maybe it's not good to see the same girls who are involved. But no, actually, that's great to see. It's the same, the same girls who were president of the French Club or involved with the track and field or involved with tennis are the same girls that are in Bloom. Because that's, that's that force multiplier, and you're getting that mentoring happening, mentoring of younger girls as they're moving up, and then they're able to mentor them to get involved in multiple clubs and activities. That's, that's what we want. We want multiple clubs and activities and sports for, for everybody, so.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Thank you for a great report. It is programs like Bloom and Rise that if introduced early enough to kids, can allow them to coexist educationally wise on the same premises. So this is the reason why we do programs like this. And, and sometimes, yes, we have to teach programs like this because sometimes those soft skills are not taught at home. So I think it is a wonderful program. I have three grown daughters and two granddaughters that participate in something like this in Charleston, South Carolina. And, you know, they're taught those soft skills, how to interact amongst the opposites. And, and so, it's a wonderful thing, and I think just by us doing it alone allows us to be able to execute our plans such as what we discussed earlier. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to invite Dr. Ford to come up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Hunter, Vice Chair Searls Law, Dr. Parker, members of the board. I am Dr. Diron Ford. I serve as the Assistant Principal Operations at Woodside High School and proud and newly appointed male, Rise Male Empowerment Network Coordinator. I'm here tonight to brief you on the exciting work that is taking place within the division designed to empower our male students. The foundation of this work supports Newport News Public Schools' core belief to promote positive outcomes for young people by providing opportunities, fostering positive relationships, and furnishing the support needed to build their capacity to be college, career, and citizen ready. In addition to presenting this information this evening, I'm also here tonight to solicit the support of our community as either partners or sponsors in this initiative. As I reflect on the Rise Male Empowerment Network, my thoughts lead me to a quote by Tony Dungy. He was often quoted as saying, "Three things are necessary for the preservation of man: to know what he ought to believe, to know what he ought to desire, and to know what he ought to do." After reading this quote, one word resonates with me, that is preservation, to value. Rise affords the school division the opportunity to create school environments and experiences for young men that place value on helping them realize their full potential as we prepare them for a strong productive future. them for a strong productive future. Our initial event took place Saturday, February ninth, two thousand nineteen, at Heritage High School. The upcoming, upcoming video provides an overview of that day and hopefully a glimpse into why we're excited about our next event.
Young men in Newport News Public Schools are becoming equipped to rise above any challenge as they grow into the leaders of tomorrow. Eighth through eleventh grade males were invited to attend Rise, a male empowerment conference at Heritage High School. The Saturday event was organized by the NNPS Youth Development Team and included an informative panel discussion, interactive breakout sessions, and dynamic presentations. Three hundred students attended the free conference, representing every middle and high school in Newport News. Superintendent Dr. George Parker greeted the audience of young men and thanked the numerous educators, community partners, and student volunteers who made this conference a success. A panel discussion included men with strong ties to Hampton Roads, each with their own compelling stories and life experiences about overcoming adversities, achieving goals, and succeeding academically. Students were able to select from a variety of engaging breakout sessions focused on equipping them for emotional, social, academic, and future success. Educators, police officers, and community leaders created a safe place for students to listen and share while discussing such topics as becoming a man, making responsible decisions, and maintaining positive relationships. Parents and caregivers were also invited to attend breakout sessions focused on helping their young men grow and assisting with college and career planning. By gaining additional skills, knowledge, and experiences through Rise, these young men have bright futures ahead of them as they seek success in all aspects of their lives.
Wow, this video is powerful. We were fortunate to have close to three hundred of our young men and mentors in attendance last year. This was an extraordinary first-time event in Newport News Public Schools. It is our goal to build on last year's event by providing dynamic local and national speakers and student-centered workshops, as well as informative sessions for parents who attend. We're all familiar with the current research on our, on our young men, which indicates that their challenges can lead to lower student achievement and societal outcomes such as incarceration, drug addiction, and other serious outcomes. We believe that the Rise Male Empowerment Network will be a leading initiative in changing the narrative for young men in the Newport News Public Schools. As a Rise community, the focus of our work is captured by the seven pillars displayed on this slide. I want to take a few minutes and just touch on a few of these. First, dealing with mentorship. As you think about our young men, it's important to establish a circle of support as a foundation for success. Academics is key in terms of working with our young men and developing and growing their cognitive skills, in terms of subject matter expertise and critical thinking, and placing emphasis on the importance of metacognition, which deals with self-reflection as it relates to academics, and teaching soft skills, having the ability to collaborate and communicate, enrichment opportunities, teaching them to invest in themselves, career and college and career exploration, preparing for life after high school, helping them find their passion and developing a plan to pursue that passion. Leadership. It's amazing how many of our young men are just natural-born leaders. It's important that we create opportunities for them to lead. Character development is essential in terms of teaching them to invest in their brand. An old adage shared by Coach Morgan Wooten, in which he stressed, be, be more concerned with your character, your character is what you, who you really are. And we have to teach our young men that this is important. And service learning, the application of learning through community service. This allows our students to tackle real-world problems and develop solutions. We believe that if we can expose our young men to each of these seven pillars during their elementary, middle, and high school years, we're setting them on a course for success both academically and behaviorally. So as we look at our Rise Network, it's supported by two key structures. The first structure is the Rise Executive Planning Team, which you see the picture on the screen. This team is composed of twenty-one leaders that represent the educational and faith-based communities. These members have a demonstrated success with working with young men within the school division and community. This executive planning team has already begun to meet regularly and is currently serving various conference planning roles in preparation for the Second Annual Rise Male Empowerment Conference. In addition, this team will be developing curriculum and identifying opportunities which align to the seven Rise pillars. The second structure is the Rise Empowerment Network. It is our belief that the success of our males in the division cannot happen as a result of a single program, person, or event. It takes what you see in this picture, a collective effort, a network. This picture was taken at the two thousand nineteen Rise Male Empowerment Conference. Men from our community were in attendance to support our young men, a collection of men representing various community stakeholders, fraternities, faith-based organizations, colleges and universities, Newport News Public Schools educators, coaches, and others. We are eager to develop partnerships and work collaboratively with community, with the community to provide opportunities and experiences that can advance the seven pillars of Rise. Dr. Chance Lewis, in one of his articles on male achievement in the twenty-first century, shared that positive experiences are critically important. This is an ideal that we steadfastly believe in Rise. First, I'd like to refer to the picture at the bottom. On October, Saturday, October thirtieth, Rise took a bus trip with forty young men to visit the National Museum of African-American History in Washington, D.C. This was an amazing cultural and academic experience, and Dr. Parker joined us as well. We have started planning with the education committees of the Zeta Lambda and Delta Beta Lambda Chapters of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated to have our high school male students participate in Leadership Development Institute, or LDI. This is a special initiative of the fraternity designed to expose young men to models of leadership, public speaking, and civic engagement. And as well, we are nineteen days away from the Second Annual Rise Male Empowerment Conference, which will take place Saturday, February eighth, at Heritage High School. We are super excited about this conference, and it will be another outstanding experience for our young men. As I reflect on one of my proudest moments as an educator, it's been affording students the opportunity to experience educational and cultural events outside the classroom. These experiences were made possible because of community partnerships. I share this to emphasize the importance of the Rise Network. So who can join? Businesses, nonprofit organizations, faith-based organizations, fraternities, community members, colleges and universities, and community outreach. How can you join? We have a formal process which, which begins with the Rise Network application. Both of these items that I referenced can be found on, on the NNPS website. So please continue to share information about the Second Annual Rise Male Empowerment Conference. This year's goal is to have four hundred young men and fifty parents in attendance. In addition, we are soliciting sponsors for the conference and the various experiences that we host for our young men. These endeavors require a considerable amount of resources, and they cannot be accomplished without the help of those who want to invest in this work. And here you have displayed is the time and our social media outlets. So Rise is here, and there's a moral imperative to this work. All the information I share regarding the objectives of Rise, the seven pillars, the Second Annual Rise Male Empowerment Conference, conference sponsorships, and how to join the Rise Network are all located on the NNPS website. If you're interested in learning more about Rise, please contact me. Thank you, and at this time, I'll take questions from the board.
Yeah, I always got, I always got something to say, yeah. So the, the question really is similar to the Bloom comments and, and outcome-based. I think it's wonderful that we had the college tours, and can we tie those to applications, specific applications at those colleges over the long run, tying those students so they had the tour and then they applied to that particular college? And then I think as well, in terms of, in terms of outcomes, can we tie it to the students who participate in Rise, so the young men that are in Rise, how, how much, can recruit them to extracurricular activities? Because we know we're at roughly eighty percent, and we're in terms of clubs, activities, and sports, and can we, you know, can we move that needle above eighty percent? So I'm always looking at ways we can move that needle. And so the, for the young men who are in Rise, what's that correlation to it? And then as well, you just leveraging the Rise program for, if these are, these of course are young men who are in leadership positions, maybe they could recruit to their own sport. So if they're on the team, you know, get one more kid to, to join the team with them and, and leveraging the, the group like that.
Well, just to, just to, to make sure, there's one thing. The, the program, the network is designed to empower mentorship and existing and future mentorship programs to align their efforts to measurable outcomes for Newport News Public Schools in academics, in extracurricular activities, in service learning, and other areas. So working with our existing mentorship initiatives throughout the city, we want to empower them to encourage more young men to build strong character development, to, to do well in classrooms, to be suspended, less suspensions and removals from instruction. That's the data that we measure for our student outcomes, and we, we see in our data that our male students have a higher suspension, probability of suspension. There's disproportionality that exists. We want more leaders to be our young men. Our ladies take the lead in many cases on many of our clubs and activities. We want our young men to lead in this division as well. So those measurable outcomes exist in our data, and Rise is, is being developed to impact our measurable outcomes for young men.
Mr. Ely?
I want to say, Dr. Ford, that presentation was amazing. Now, how is it possible we could do this conference not just once a year, but every quarter, like four times a year? It's too much. But it's, but it's, it's so, it's so impactful to so many youth, and I hope there's so many businesses and partners pour into this, because it's, these children, the children are our future. They're the future of Newport News. They're our future doctors, our future CEOs, and this program, it gives our youth so much hope, both Rise and Bloom. I would like to see it done, like, kind of like a club that meets maybe monthly, and each quarter they have one big to do instead of once a year. Because the kids nowadays, we can't hit them just once a year. We got to hit them every month. But thank you so much, it's, it's phenomenal.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm Dr. Best.
Yes, thank you for your report. I, I missed the opening session of Rise last year, had a conflict, but I came later. It was just amazing to see all of those young men and all those older men and just the camaraderie, the, the spirit, the, the atmosphere, just, it was just so positive and so just, I was really just overwhelmed. I, I really, really was. So I would like to commend you all, and I'm looking forward to great things from Rise as well.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, we're going to move the agenda, and so we're still on reports and information. Five point oh-two, the attendance report, five point oh-three, membership report, five point oh-four, the construction report. Those were part of your package. If you, there's no comments, we'll move to five point oh-five, comments by the superintendent, Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And a short agenda, but an impactful evening, and I want to thank the board, first of all, for your, for sharing not only your, your comments, but your heart with the community around, around better service to our students. That's what it's all about. This notice, we will not always make easy decisions. That's not what, what, what this board was elected for, and that's not what I signed up for as superintendent. But I can assure not only this board, but the broader community, that whatever decision this board makes in, in the spirit of, of service to students, my staff and myself will be fully committed to making sure that we provide the best education possible for our students. And moving forward, I think you see that we, we create things like Bloom and Rise because there's a need for our students, and we'll continue to be innovative and creative and find better ways to serve. So that we can assure the community that moving forward, we will put our best foot forward for our Huntington Middle School students, for our broader community, and we'll continue to make sure that we are working to get a Huntington Middle School built. While we have a, had a fairly busy start to the month, I'm reminding everyone that we're still only a few days into the start of the new year. Therefore, I'd like to start by wishing our students, staff, and families a Happy New Year. We are back, and we're rolling. In September, we began this school year very optimistic that the planning and initiatives that we have put in place would lead to transformational change in our school division. Our Student Discipline Task Force presented data in October, which supported a reduction in removals from instruction versus, and suspensions for children of color. This semester, our task force will bring forward recommendations to the school board to continue this important work, which will eventually impact the daily practices and environment of every classroom in Newport News. Our Strategic Planning Committees also began their work at the start of the school year, developing the profile of a Newport News graduate and a five-year strategic plan. This work will eventually move forward beyond community planning teams and involve the greater, the greater community and city, as well as our school board. Ultimately, our strategic plan will communicate our aspirations and goals as a public school system, and our profile will clearly articulate what we value in our gift of education to every student. This is truly meaningful work. While there are many other initiatives underway that will lead to transformational change in our school division, I simply want the community to know that there is opportunity for greatness in our school division just over the horizon. This is our time to move forward bold ideas with the courage that Newport News Public Schools can be one of the premier school divisions in not only this region, but also in the state. On behalf of our central office team, I would like to thank our building leaders this, this week for their dedication and service. We also, this is Principal Appreciation Week in Virginia, and our principals are the face of public education in each community around this great city. They represent our values and service every day in each of our schools, and for that, we say thank you. January also marks the start of classes for this year's early college students. More than eighty seniors are now enrolled in Thomas Nelson Community College and are earning college credit. And our inaugural early college, early career in welding program is also underway at Thomas Nelson Community College. Through hands-on training, nearly a dozen seniors will have the opportunity to earn all five welding certifications through the American Welding Society. In a few weeks, these students will qualify for high-paying welding jobs. Okay, so we're, we're off and running. Regarding upcoming events, and I have quite a few here, this week I will be participating in a webinar on exploring workforce-based learning innovations, along with Mr. Casey Roberts, the Director of New Horizons Regional Education Center, on Thursday, January twenty-third, from four to five P.M. We will discuss how we are preparing students for successful careers with innovative work-based learning experiences like the one you just saw at Thomas Nelson Community College. If you're interested in sitting in on that webinar, the, for registration information, please contact my office, and we'll get that information to you, or send it out electronically tomorrow. I invite our families and the community to join us for the All-City Science, Engineering, and Technology Fair on Saturday, January twenty-fifth, at Heritage High School. The fair will feature the results of some engaging experiments and innovations. The public may view the student projects from eleven to eleven forty-five A.M., and a STEM design challenge will take place also from nine to eleven A.M. The award ceremony will begin at twelve-thirty. Don't come late. These are some very innovative ideas, and I, I showed up at the end for the awards, and I was really disappointed I didn't get to see all the cool stuff that the kids had done. So please, if you're going to get there, get there early. There is plenty to see, and these, the kids are excited to share their projects. The Regional Archery Tournament will be held on Monday, January twenty-seventh, at an Achievable Dream Middle and High School. We have a lot of students who look forward to this tournament each year. Newport News Public Schools is home to some very skilled archers. For the past ten years, we have had several teams advance to state and national competition. So we wish our students good luck as they compete in the tournament. I also invite everyone to attend the opening ceremony for, for the annual Student Art Show on Saturday, February first, from one to three, at the Downing Gross Cultural Arts Center. The show features various forms of art designed by students representing all grade levels. Following the opening event, the art exhibit will be open to the public, February first through March ninth, from ten A.M. to four P.M. And as we know, budget development is always underway, and it's underway for the next fiscal school year, and I invite everyone to be a part of that process. Uh, and I invite everyone to be a part of that process. During today's work session, we presented one of our, uh, some of our budget priorities to the school board. And we will look forward to coming in February to present some information on our upcoming operational budget to the, to the community on February, um, uh, at the next board meeting. On Monday, February third, we will host a public input session on the FY twenty-one budget at six thirty here in the auditorium. Over the next few weeks, we will continue to solicit input on the budget. My recommended, my recommended budget will be presented to the school board on March tenth. For a complete budget calendar, please visit our website if you're interested in participating in that process. Parents and staff are reminded that students do not report to school on Friday, January twenty-fourth, which is Regional Professional Development Day and Monday, January twenty-seventh, which is a teacher workday. And finally, I look forward to seeing many of you, as mentioned in our previous presentation, at the second Male Empowerment Summit. RISE, The Power of History at Heritage High School on Saturday, February eighth, from eight thirty to two thirty P.M. Look forward to seeing, seeing you all. And that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Parker. So at this time, we will move agenda to item number six. Again, it's an opportunity for us to hear from the audience. Are there any cards? As stated before, um, uh, you have three minutes to speak. When you hear the, the green light comes on when you begin, the yellow light signals you have thirty seconds remaining. And the red light and the beep, uh, we ask to, to you wrap up your comments. And so we do have a card, Ms. Jamie Baysmore.
I just want to clarify, I guess, for myself and, and for those who are looking and listening, that the vote was on a motion. Was that the motion to send the students to Heritage? That is the motion that passed. It wasn't the, the other.
No, that is correct.
Okay, so in that case, I want to say thank you. Thank you to those who supported keeping Huntington Middle School alive. I was somewhat appalled at some of the comments that were made on those who, uh, wanted it to remain as it was. Because, you know, for one thing, I, I was, in listening to you, Mr. Hunter, when you were saying that you would not send your, you would not have sent your students to that school. I did twenty-five, at least twenty-five years of volunteer service at Huntington Middle School. There are things that you make work. When, what, whatever the negatives are, you make things work. And I know that a lot of teachers and students may have suffered mostly through the temperatures. It was either too cold or it was too hot. We tried to have programs, sometimes you had to keep your coat on to get through the program. But during some of those timeframes, people, I don't know how many of you would have been on that board at that time. The school was neglected. Maintenance was not done. And then when they came and told us that they were going to either rebuild or, or rehabilitate the school, we trusted that and we waited for that. And it did not happen. They came to us with, we're going to close the school. To this day, I feel that our community was totally disrespected in that respect. If I had not contacted the superintendent of schools at that time, the, the former, if I had not contacted her, there probably would not have been anything said to us about closing Huntington Middle School. And I told her then, our community has been disrespected. I just want to say thank you. I want the school to continue. The professionals, paid professionals, you pay people to say whether or not it was needed. They said the school was needed. The sixth graders will not suffer in a high school. I have to cut it short. I'll write a letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? There being none, we will move the agenda to matters by the school board. Mr. Gore.
Hello, everyone. I wanted to start off by saying that we had a, Sage had a joint meeting with the Citywide SCA in which we were bombarded by all the great things that Citywide SCA was doing. And we was actually being, um, able to become a part of what they were doing. And I was extremely happy with it. We were discussing topics such as the Citywide SCA pep rally, um, the dress code issues. And we were even coming up, we were going, we split it up with new ideas and topics. And then we have the ideas and topics that we wanted to develop on. And I believe that that was truly both enlightening and great for our community. Um, I am also happy about the development groups because students believe that their only job is to learn. However, that couldn't be any further from the truth. Their job is actually to develop as well as learn. And I believe that not only do these ideas develop our community as a whole, but develop the individuals. So I am happy to be in the community in which we empower our individuals to do great and not only to do great by themselves, but also to empower others to do great as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Bass.
Thank you. Two short comments tonight. I would like to thank the principals as we celebrate Principals Week. I would like to thank the principals. You have sometimes a thankless job. It's a very difficult job. And I want you to know your work does not go unnoticed. Truly appreciative for all that you do and usually above and beyond the call of duty. I had an opportunity to attend a program on Martin Luther King's birthday. And it was a joint effort with Zion Baptist Church, one of our faith-based supporters for Newport News Public Schools and our, um, family and our community engagement specialists. And that program was just absolutely phenomenal. The students, there were four students that spoke on the program. And what they spoke about was the value of work and service at school and the community. And they were just awesome speakers. They left everyone in awe. The teachers and the staff members that were in support at the program that took the time for their day off, we really, really appreciated them being there. And Ms. Emily Peel, the Family and Community Engagement Specialist, she very briefly shared with the audience a little about Title I. She talked to them a little bit about Title I schools and very briefly the impact that poverty has on children when they are learning. And she also shared with them, she, she tied it in with the vision of Dr. King and how he also fought for people that were living in poverty. So it was just a wonderful program. And, and I love the way that the faith-based organization and the schools came together to do something in a really, really positive way for the children. So I just wanted Zion Baptist Church and our, um, community engagement specialists to know that we do appreciate that. And it was a wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bass. Uh, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would like to thank all of the principals because it is Principal Thank You Week, I believe, right? Principals are the rubber that meets the road. You know, they are the first line of defense. And I tell Dr. Parker this all the time, they are the first line of defense where the rubber meets the road. You know, they provide direction, purpose and motivation, not just to their staff, but also to families and the children entrusted in their care. Uh, I, I wholeheartedly have faith in our young people. I have faith in our kids that they, uh, want to do the right thing. They will do the right thing. But at the end of the day, uh, we as adults are in a position to teach, coach and mentor those kids. I think if we continue to provide a positive environment for our kids, uh, trust me, they will surprise you. And I think as administrators, I'm, I'm sure you all see it all the time. So we cannot, you know, I don't want to dwell on bad incident here, a bad incident here and paint or label all of our kids. I have trust in the kids. Now, I don't have trust in another entity that have, uh, that I, uh, uh, considered have, have misled the school division. So I want to make that perfectly clear. I have faith in our kids, the administration, our teachers, our principals, uh, in our school system. And not in the other. I have partnered with Councilman Marcellus Harris. And, and we partnered together because we want to show to the community that the school board and hopefully the entire school, I mean, uh, city council can work together. We're partnering this Saturday to have a, a, a drive for kids to re-up on their school supplies. It'll be the twenty-fifth this Saturday at the community center in, at the community center and on Jefferson, not Jefferson, but on Warwick Avenue. It starts at fourteen hundred and goes to sixteen thirty. So we have been taking donations for all types of school supplies. So, you know, parents bring your, your kids out and hopefully to re-up on our school supplies. So, you know, we decided to work together. We, we've always worked together. But we wanted to make, make, you know, a public proclamation that, you know, we can work together. And we doing it not just by talk, but by action. By action. And so I just want to say that and have a welcome back.
Uh, Mr., Mr., Mr. Harris.
I was just gonna say that's two to four thirty.
Did you tell, you, you talked a military talk.
Oh, yeah. It's two, it's two P.M. to four thirty.
Now, you got to promise you're not going to make them do any push-ups.
Uh, Mr. Brown.
Okay. I'll try to, I'll try to be brief tonight, so I'm, I'm not going to, certainly not going to comment on a vote that was taken. I just want to comment in general that, um, I'm very proud to be a member of the board. Very proud of the debate that took place. Very proud to be accompanied by others who care as much about kids and about education as I do. Uh, I could, you know, you can very clearly see the passion. And I'm proud that we are able to exhibit that to the public that, you know, this is not simple and no one takes this job. I don't think anyone sitting up here takes his job lightly, uh, that we are committed to kids. And while we, we disagree, I know that I believe we all are very, um, respect each other. And I really respect, uh, all the opinions that were, that were stated. And, um, you know, uh, it was, uh, like, like I said before, it was, uh, you know, agonizing type of, type of decision. But I really respect and appreciate the debate that took place and, and appreciate how much everyone cares. Now, I would like to also mention that was already commented on. There's going to be a science fair this weekend. So I'm looking forward to the science fair, looking forward to seeing all the students out there and their wonderful projects. There's a lot of really fantastic projects that, um, that are displayed there. The winner of this science fair has a chance to compete regionally. And then they also have a chance to compete at the state level. So that being mentioned that, and a lot of Newport News Public School students are consistently going to regionals, placing high, doing well and as well moving on to state competition. So, um, I expect that this year will be no different and that we will see a lot of really great projects that are going to move on for further selection. I also want to, uh, comment that now is the, the budget season. So the same thing, I do the same thing every year, so no one should be surprised. I'm, I'm going to make my, I said I'm going to call the shot again this year. Every year that I've been on this board, we have done a raise for the teachers and staff. And this year will be no different. This year, I'm calling for a three percent raise for all the teachers and staff this year. So we will do a raise and I'm calling for it to be a three percent raise. And, uh, so I'm looking forward to rolling up my sleeves and working with my fellow colleagues on making that happen. And we will, we will, uh, push ourselves and, and work very hard on behalf of all of the folks who take care of our kids to fight as hard for them as they fight for our kids. Uh, and I think that, uh, they deserve nothing less than, we need to be a, a division that is leading in pay. We are in a teacher shortage in the state of Virginia, across the nation, we're in a teacher shortage. Uh, we're in a teacher shortage in the state of Virginia, but we don't have to be in a teacher shortage in Newport News Public Schools. While we have continued to raise those salaries, our recruitment and retention has continued to rise. It becomes easier to staff our schools and to have, uh, the best staff when you pay the best. And, uh, since we expect the best results, then we need to pay like it. So I'm, I'm committing to that. So, uh, that's my, my January declaration like I always do every year. And then lastly, just the, um, I've got to make my, uh, make a somber note that, uh, you know, I hate to, you hate to be, you hate to be right when you predict negative things. But, you know, we do have, we are experiencing, we're in the middle of the building flu. That's what I'm going to call this, is a building flu. And as I said earlier, Huntington was the first, but not the last. And that this, this budget arrangement that we have in our capital budget is not sustainable. Where the school division controls most roughly seventy percent of all the real estate in the city, but gets less than thirty percent of the capital budget. So you can't sustain the larger land mass and area and square footage with less, less than thirty percent of a budget. It's just not sustainable. And that has continued on, uh, through multiple boards and that, that's been commented on by the public. So just letting the public know, that's how you get here. That's how we got here. How we got here is decades of budgets that are less than thirty percent. Huntington is, was the first. Next up is the Aviation Academy. So now the, now the flu is passing up north. We know that. We had the Peninsula Airport Commission, as well as superintendent, made a recommendation. They did their assessment of the building. Similar to Huntington, no longer suitable for educating our children. And we're going to have to make a very difficult decision at the end of this year. So the public can hear it from me now, so you, you don't have to be surprised. That is, that's where we're going. That's what we're working towards. So now is the time to make your voice heard and start speaking up about the Aviation Academy and what we're going to do about it. We're already in the discussion. We've had our work sessions talking about how we're going to retrofit Denby High School and try to bring the students over there. Similar to with Huntington, we're going to have to bring students over to, over to Denby High School in, uh, in the interim while we wait for a new building. Sound familiar, right? Uh, we have made, we have made the budget requests and the money is not forthcoming. So Huntington, now Aviation Academy. I'm going to make my next prediction. What was up next? We talked about it. Warwick High School. All right, this is, uh, this is not, uh, uh, something that's going to go away. This is something that's going to require significant public pressure, significant public involvement from the, from the public, from the citizenry to stay involved and understand that we can't be at less than thirty percent of the budget and try to take care of seventy percent or more of the real estate. You can't do that. Eventually, it becomes unsustainable. And you start shrinking, you start chipping away schools. We already started that, that chipping away process. I've been talking about this for years. We have over a hundred and fourteen learning cottages across our forty-two school sites. Tonight, we vote, tonight, we talked about adding another six, so we're now going to be at a hundred and twenty. That's the flu. You get unusable spaces, not enough, not enough usable classroom spaces. You start going to cottages. Next thing you know, you start shutting down parts of a building. Next thing you know, eventually the building becomes unsustainable and then you got to shut it down. It's not, it's not a problem that gets better over time. When you got a leak in your roof, you have to replace it. Sitting there and, um, looking at it, putting patches in it only prolongs the inevitable. So, um, the age of a building is roughly fifty years. We've been talking that and preaching that. Our buildings, our average building is more than fifty years old. Building flu is here. And, and so I implore everyone up on this day, it's, it's, we, we've been serious about it, but it's past time for seriousness. It's time for emergency-like procedures, emergency-like communication because we're, 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 we're already in the process of shutting down schools, uh, facilities and sites and moving kids around and making hard choices. So we thought tonight was hard. Imagine that times three, four, five. That's, that's our future unless things, unless things turn around and, and change. So, um, on that note, I'll turn it back.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Ely.
Thank you. I'd like to wish everybody a happy, um, past MLK weekend. It was a lot of great celebrations, like Dr. Terry Bass said, throughout the city. Um, the NAACP did a great one, the SCLC did a great one. So, um, special thanks to everybody who put those great projects together. Also like to thank all the principals for all the hard work they do on Principal Week. I definitely appreciate you and I know this board appreciate all the hard work that you do. And that's it. Have a great weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. Ms. Alger.
Yes, uh, as a former principal, I can tell you that we do heart and soul. Uh, I want to thank the principals for their long days, uh, all that they do to commit. And of course, um, every time that they are, every day they come in, they're serving each and every child. And that to me, uh, matters immensely. Um, next Monday, I'm going to be lobbying. I'm going to go to Richmond and talk to folks about making sure that we are improving teacher retention and helping out in terms of what is it that we can do to fully fund SOQ. is it that we can do to fully fund the S O Qs and so that, you know, funding is there, and it's not anything that can be taken back. So that's something that I do every year. I always end up at Richmond and I'm being a voice for educators all around. So, thank you. And I want to say thank you to my colleagues. Today was, I know, was not easy, but it's incredible that we're able to communicate and, and respectfully agree and disagree and be able to make those tough decisions for communities. That's what it's all about, and I think that that, to me, says a lot about our community.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair, Mr. Earl's Laws.
Well, I'm going to jump on the principal hurrah, because they really are the heart of what we do. And so many thanks to them for putting it, holding it down for all the students and being that relationship in the building, creating culture, putting the Band-Aids on the things that need Band-Aids, and then helping us with the emergencies. So many, many, many thanks to them. Students, it's exam week, so do your best. Get your rest, and don't sweat it. Just do your best. And for me, I'm excited to see the direction we're going to head with, with Huntington. I have all the confidence in this room that our administrators will make this decision work and be the best possible it can be for our students. I'm very excited to see that. And I know that we are challenged, and you can hear me say it today, Douglas, you're right. We have a fight because we don't want to be here frequently. This is not where we want to be, so, thank you.
Okay. Well, that leaves it to me. So great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools. So thank you, Board, for that enlightening discussion that we had about Huntington. I would say, again, congratulations to, and thank the principals for all that they do in our schools. But we just have a lot of passion up here. And not every vote, you know, even though sometimes you, votes don't go your way, what have you, this board's going to work together. One thing that I did say, that we're going to build a new Huntington. I may be the only person up here that truly believes that. You know, I'm a philanthropic advisor. That's what I do. That's what I really do for work. And what I do, I build partnerships. One thing I know about partnerships, you can't continue to beat a dog with a stick and think that dog's going to change. Sometimes you have to talk to the dog. You have to stand that olive leaf out, you know, because it hadn't been working. Sticking, you know, us beating up folks who have the money obviously does not work. It's not working. But I did hear two of my members say that they're building relationships, building relationships with their counterparts on the city council. That's how you move. If you start out fighting, it's hard to reverse itself. It's hard to reverse itself. You must believe, you must believe that, you know, we're going to do the best for our students and our kids. And I'm quite sure, and I'm positive, that this administration, Dr. Parker and his staff, and all the principals, and the teachers, and the custodians, and the bus drivers, and all that takes to make this new change must, it will happen. And this still board, and this board will may not, we may have some, some nice discussions again, as Duncan Brown say, and we may have some nice discussions again, but you know what? The one thing I do respect, each one of my board members, is because we're just passionate. We are passionate about education, and each one of us have our different views on what will work. But whatever the vote was passed, we're all going to stick behind it. We're all going to stick behind it. So like them, you know, I want to wish the students, that, I'm wishing students that are going to Huntington, as I said, students are resilient, you know, they will adapt, you know, just like Jurassic Park, if, you know, they say they will, they always, they will, they will adapt. I mean, kids are resilient, and they will adapt. That being said about the Huntington, so now that we've passed the vote to keep the kids at Huntington and move the sixth graders at Huntington, that requires a public hearing and rezoning at our next school board meeting. It's going to, it's going to require a hearing and rezoning. So though we passed it, you know, we've, we want to get the parents out again to inform them that those who thought they may be going somewhere because their older brother or sister had reticulated to those two schools, we must inform the parents about the rezoning, and what rezoning comes, additional funds. With rezoning comes additional funds. And so I want to be cautious when we do these things, that we have to be, you know, my background's in finance. And so every time we make a move, there's a counter reaction. But I ask you, for the Huntington individuals that were going to be zoned for, or currently zoned for Creighton and Hines Middle Schools, those individuals will be rezoned, and so that's very important. Or we will get calls next year, because they didn't answer the call when we had these meetings, we didn't have a robust showing of the parents or the students here, I want to make sure that the parents that are out there listening, as, as you've been, as this board has voted, and they heard you, that you wanted your students, and you wanted your students at Huntington. So I ask that you also pay attention that there needs to be a rezoning, and your child or children may be rezoned to a different place. So that being said.
And just to be, just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, that public hearing will be set for the next board meeting as part of the agenda on February eighteenth.
Right.
For, to, to rezone back to the original, for sixth grade, rising sixth grade students. And the, and that, that zone change will be back to the original zone for Huntington Middle School.
Right.
So that will be the rezoning plan. We will put information out electronically before the, before the board meeting, so the public is made fully aware of the rezoning plan for rising sixth grade students.
And, and for those, so for those who, who know the parents that don't necessarily like to call us or send us emails, please, you know, inform them and pass that word around that there will be a rezoning hearing, a next school board meeting, for those rising sixth graders there in the South District. That being said, again, welcome back, welcome to a, a brand-new decade, twenty twenty, and I look forward again. Ms. Alger, thank you. We're, we're excited to have you here on this board, and we're glad some of your family stayed. And to that fact, I'm going to, if there's no other comment, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, and have a good evening.